Work session meeting, Tuesday, May the 28th, 2024. First item we have on our agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. What is the pleasure of the council on the agenda approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we accept the agenda as presented. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And it does carry unanimously. Next item is a presentation from the Cherryville ABC Board. And at this time, I'd like our Finance Director Dixie Wall, if you'd come forward. The representative from the ABC Board is not here. I don't know whether he's forgotten it, but he has given the check to John Abernathy, Council Member. And John has a check to present to you, and if you'll open it and let us know how much it is.
Which I know. So the ABC Board is having another banner year. They just had their monthly meeting last week, and there's a check for $30,000. We're in the process of being audited. And whenever that audit is complete, we'll expect another check to come after the state audit's done.
And they've assured me that it's gonna be the largest that they've ever given to the city.
Yes.
Did the manager say where he was, John? Did he?
I didn't know if they were... They gave me the check, I guess. I don't know that they were really planning on coming, they didn't tell me they were.
Oh, okay.
So I'm assuming maybe that's why they gave me the check.
Okay. Yeah, he talked to us at MPO.
Yeah, I saw Alan, he sat beside me at the MPO, and he told me they were gonna bring... Okay, and there will be another one coming. And next item, well, no, while we're still under this...
Yeah, it is the next.
No, it is the next item, discussion of requests. We have a request from Cherryville ABC Board, and that's to the installation of the new sign. This is on the service road. The actual land is owned by Great Outdoors, but they let the ABC store use that sign so that when you're coming up that road, it has an arrow pointing Cherryville ABC Liquor Store, so that people know it is Alcohol Store. And the reason the city has to approve it is because they had the city seal down... That's why they're asking.
Can anybody think of any negative thing?
Would be my only concern, because people can perceive things as we know.
Well, I know they can, but we do have a beautiful seal and...
They have given a lot of money to the city.
Let me ask you this. Is the store owned by the city?
No.
It's got its own corporation?
We own the contents.
Okay, but we rent the store.
If it goes belly up, we auction off the inventory, and that goes to the city.
But we own the store, but not the building?
We don't own the building, don't you all do?
I don't think we own anything.
We don't own the land.
It's kind of its own separate entity that is...
Well, when I was on the board for many years, I was told that, in fact, I had to put my house up to build that extra warehouse.
Yeah.
The four guys that was on them, we had to put our houses up as collateral, and... To the city. I know that to be 100%.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
I can have Yancey, the city attorney, to check that for sure. But that's the way it was when I was on the board.
But if you look it up on, say, Gaston County Tax, it's not gonna show that the City of Cherryville owns that building.
The city owns nothing down there.
The only thing we do is appoint the board.
Point the board.
And see, there's obviously laws in place, that's why we just received that check, because a certain amount of their proceeds have to come to the city.
That's correct. I think if we don't own the building and manage it, our seal shouldn't be on it. It says Cherryville on there already, Cherryville Plaza. Why do we need to put our seal on? To me, we're making ourselves liable, and of course, they can sue you for anything, but it makes it look like we own it.
Well, I would defer to our attorney, but, I mean, I would love to be able to put our seal, but if we have some liability there or something. It's like a city-owned building. Uh-huh, it's not.
That's the difference, too. Mayor, Council, I'd like some time just to do a little bit of research.
Okay.
To look at other communities and see what their signs look like, and see if there are any other cities that are engaged, and if there is any kind of case law that would suggest that this is a good or bad idea, and report back to you all, if that would be acceptable to the council mayor.
Okay, will... Does that suit everybody to defer it to our June 10th council meeting?
I think I'll leave that on there.
For further discussion or vote, okay. And we'll let them know, because I think they're ready to have the sign made.
They haven't done anything yet.
I don't think so, because that's...
They want it approved by the city, so of the liability, I think.
Okay, next item, and again, this is item four, consideration of zoning ordinance amendment. And this still goes back to our cluster development. We did discuss it to some detail in public hearing, at the last public hearing we had on this. So I don't know what's new. We have our planning and zoning director, Richard Ealem, here. If there's anything that council wants to ask him, that they think's new on this, that's pages one through four in your iPads.
There is nothing new on those four pages.
1,000 square feet, what's the limit on the size of the lots to get that designation?
For the R9 cluster, it's 6,000 square feet.
As special use?
That's through the special... Yeah, they would resent it to a special use cluster of 6,000 square feet, and if you had an R12, it would be 9,000, no, 8,000 square feet.
And that could still be considered special use cluster?
All clusters are...
You have to give a special use permit.
How large can you go until it's not a cluster anymore?
Smallest you can go is R9, and the largest is R40, which is 40,000 square feet and above. Even if you're R9, you can still be larger than that, that's the minimum you can be. If it's R12, 12,000 is the smallest it can be.
If it's R9, you can go 6,000, can't you?
If it's a special use.
It would have to be special use.
It can be 6,000 or more.
And R9 right now is six-foot setbacks.
Yeah, that's one of the main... That's one of the things I'm asking to get changed, it's five, and I want to get changed to six.
So that'd be 12 foot between the houses.
Right, and add an additional 10 feet from the edge of the street to the corner house. Because right now, it's six feet, five feet.
If you think about it like this, when the other two developments come, and that's what makes it special use, is these are the minimum qualifications you have to have. That's where you, as a council, can say, well, you know, I'm on special use, and that's where we went from five to six-foot side setbacks. And that's where you can come up with other things that you request with approval for those type of developments.
Because we had the one, we increased that one out there.
Yeah, I mean, you increased it basically during the meeting. You know, you said, we don't like five-foot side setbacks, we want six-foot minimum. And that's why it went to six.
And the guy left from here, went to his car and come back and said, done.
Yep. So you're recommending everything in yellow, is that correct?
Right, and there's a couple of...
So you did not recommend the strike through the R9?
Yeah, see, that's...
I did, that was part of my recommendation, and I know y'all wanna continue that probably to the next meeting, but if there's any way we could've got the items like the five feet to six foot, and page three, the items three, four, and five, and then on page four...
So are we leaving R9 in or not?
Correcting D. You know, that's just wordage that should be.
It shouldn't be corrected.
Whatever y'all decide down the road on the clusters, that's fine, but those particular things need to be changed and put into the ordinance.
Okay, would... I'll defer to our city attorney again. Would that require another public hearing to do that?
I think so, yes, sir.
That's what I was thinking.
You can continue the one you had last meeting in June, at our June council meeting.
Okay.
All this was given to you at the last meeting, it's already been gone over in a public hearing.
Right. Except there was no action.
Exactly, we're carried over, I think, to the work, to the next meeting anyway.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so that'll be on June the 10th.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Anything else?
Can I ask a question?
Is there somebody waiting now? Wait, there's somebody kinda waiting? Or you just...
No, not at all.
Okay.
I know there's maybe people out there wanting to buy large sections of land, but they hadn't submitted anything. I haven't heard of anybody.
Okay.
I'm just still confused, I'm so sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
But on the pages we have, R9 is struck through totally.
That was my recommendation, my recommendation.
To take it out.
To the planning board.
But now we're not doing that.
Well, that's up to us.
I was bringing what they didn't recommend to the city council.
That's what the planning board wanted. The planning and zoning board, when they met, their recommendation was to do away with...
With all clusters.
Of all clusters, not just R9.
They didn't go with any of my recommendations.
They didn't go do away with 6,000, 12 foot lot.
That's what I wanted to do.
This R9 is under the minimum single-family lots.
Bet.
So I'm just, I'm just very confused about that. Do we leave that R9 in there?
Right.
Yes, it's in there.
Well, right now.
Presently, it is.
That's what he's asking y'all to make a decision on in June.
Next month, yeah.
Do we keep the R9 cluster in there with 6,000 square foot lots?
No, 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 it's not 6,000, is it?
Yeah.
For R9 cluster.
For R9, yes.
He's got 8,000, is his recommendation.
That's on R12.
That's on R12.
That's on R12.
Is that a six? Oh, I don't have my license.
Well, I can make it better.
Oh, okay, I see now. Okay, I did it.
That's the decision you'll have to make, is do we leave that R9 cluster in there with 6,000 square foot lots as the minimum, or do you take that part out and go with R12, 8,000 square foot as the minimum?
Okay, but we're not removing R9 from just a regular subdivision.
No, no, no. None of that, you're only talking about clusters.
Only clusters.
Only clusters.
Okay.
Okay.
But that was why we denied the other builders over the R9, 6,000.
They were going from R12, wanting to get the whole thing rezoned to an R9 cluster, which is 6,000, so they were cutting, wanting to cut the land in half.
But if we take your recommendation, take it out, then they can't do that there, they'd have to come back with something different.
A special use permit.
They've got it now, they could go with 12,000 square foot lots and make houses.
Right.
But any kind, even if they wanted to go with an R12 cluster, they still have to come back for a special use permit.
Right.
If you're gonna do away with the green space, the walking trails.
Yep, that would eliminate stuff, so. You'll lose that canopy, you know, they talked about.
Makes sense.
Stormwater runoff.
She was taking you.
That's the reason, that's the reason we put Part 11 back into it, so that they can make a big section of land into 9,000 square foot lots, 12,000 square foot lots. They have to go through that.
Richard's recommendations, sir.
And while we're talking about cluster development, too, I want you to all remember to, the Rickway Road development, you know, it's on both sides of the road. So if you're going down Rickway Road, you know, the side to the left, the big side, that is R9 cluster, 6,000 square foot lots. But the smaller section on the right is still R12. You did not rezone it to R9 cluster, left it at R12. So when they build those, is it 25 maybe, on the right-hand side of the road?
Right, it's not meaning...
It's somewhere around, it's in the twenties, the number. If they do that side, they will have to have the 12,000 square foot lots on that side.
They have not submitted a final plat for that yet.
Okay, so I was under the impression that the land on the right was not cluster.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not, it's R12.
That's what I thought, okay.
Because it matches up with what's already there on that side of the road.
Hidden Valley.
Hidden Valley, yeah.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you, thank you.
But see, so we had, in our ordinance, we had a lot of reference to this Section 11 for just a standard subdivision, but we did not have Section 11 in our ordinance.
Yeah, that was a problem.
So now, we have, if you have land and you're not seeking a special use, now you still have rules and regulations that you have to follow for that subdivision. The cluster is, if you want something other than that Section 11 rules and requirements, you have to come before council and say, I need a special use, and then it would be subject to now this cluster. So it's two separate subdivision ordinances, essentially. Cluster that you have to apply for, Section 11 subdivision, which automatically applies to you if you take attractive land and start subdividing it. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Either way, you have to come before the board to get the plat approved.
Yes, absolutely.
And the planning board.
Yes, sir, exactly.
Okay, any other questions for Richard or for our attorney? If not, we'll move on to item five, consideration of a dead-end sign on Hillsdale Drive. And we have a Public Works Director, Chris King. Tell us exactly where Hillsdale Drive is.
Good evening. Hillsdale Drive is off of North Drive, it's the first road to the right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Complete dead end, just like Joyce's drive was. Basically the same exact situation, and had a citizen contact us about putting a dead-end sign up there. Not sure if people was pulling in there, not turning around in their driveway, or what's going on, but they want a dead-end sign put up there, so.
And our garbage trucks had a lot of trouble there at one time, being able to turn or having to back out.
They back in there.
Yeah, they have to.
There's no, there's no way to turn around.
Can't turn.
No. I'd much rather them back in than have to back out, because not but two or three houses down there, so.
Yeah, okay.
Good idea.
Okay, does any council member have any questions to ask in regards to the dead-end sign?
I make a motion that we approve the dead-end sign on Hillsdale Drive.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the dead-end sign on Hillsdale Drive. We have a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. There is none. Okay. Go to item six, discussion of the National League of City Service Line Warranty Program. And Councilman Janice Hovis had asked about that. This was before her tenure began, and we approved this. You know, that's where the company could go in, use our seal, and request.
Send letters.
And they were supposed to pay us for anybody that signed up, but it's, I've talked, we talked to Dixie, and we've not received any...
I gave you a sheet there, Mayor. I gave all of you an email, I talked to, I'm not even gonna try to butcher the lady's last name, but you can see an email today where I talked to her, because obviously, these mail, these, these letters go out, you get them in the mail, and then people make their own individual decision whether they wanna take out this insurance policy or not. So we really don't know who or how many people have taken them out. So I reached out to her today, and I did get an email back from her, and it shows you there, the current customers is 32 that they've had, total policies, 66, you know, water lines, 31 water lines, 29 sewer lines, and six in-home plumbing policies. So based off of that, our royalties off of what we get from that is, what we should get is $236. Well, when I reached out to her, she thought that the check had been sent to us in February, that's when they paid the royalties. When we looked, we did not receive anything, so she said, yeah, fill out this form, we've sent the form in today, so we'll get a check for $236. But it's basically 50 cent for a policy. They have had two that have had, two claims so far in the city that have...
Oh, really?
...vowed that they've paid.
So it's pretty good.
She didn't have any explanation about why we hadn't gotten it?
Well, they didn't have the form that they have to have to process the payment.
Do they use local contractors?
They do, they do.
So had they not sent the form, or have we not just sent it back?
Well, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, to be honest, but we sent it today, after they found out that we didn't receive the form.
Okay.
And it was a simple form, they'll do an ACH deposit, we'll get it.
Okay.
I have a question about the form that they did mail out to our customers on the amount that they would need to pay, and it doesn't list the interior. Now, they do provide interior...
They do.
This says exterior water line coverage, sewer septic line coverage, but on this page, it doesn't show anything about the interior, so...
The only thing I'm looking at is, if you look on your iPads, on page six...
On that one, it does, but this one, but this one that they mailed out, yeah, that one does, that's what they presented back to y'all earlier.
Mm-hmm.
If you look on page six, it shows in-home plumbing is $9.99, send them off.
But what the, what the people have to sign in, sign up for, doesn't give that option.
I think that is something they have to take up with them, if that's what they wanna take out.
Probably the salesperson probably...
Yeah, we don't have anything to do with it.
We don't have anything to do with it.
We have nothing to do with it at all, we just allow them to do it.
Well, I certainly don't have a problem with it, but we approved...
Because you can see there, they have in-home plumbing policies six.
Yeah, they got six people it signed up for.
So obviously, people are taking those policies out, but...
So I guess maybe when they contact these people, they will offer that...
That's possible. So I'm sure they try to upsell.
I'm sure. Yeah, I'm sure they do.
But you know, if you really think about it, if you take some of our older neighborhoods, Mayor Bean, if you look at your neighborhood, how many times have we all received phone calls where people are upset because their sewer lateral, laterals have collapsed? Because of this old terracotta pipes?
It is.
I just replaced mine last year, $3,500.
And what people have to remember is, they're responsible all the way to the main.
That's right.
That might be in the middle of the road, but you're responsible for that section of the road as well. So this policy helps those people. It helps give them an option where they don't have to worry about that $2,500 bill to run that sewer lateral, it's a have-to, you know, it's...
Okay.
If you live in certain neighborhoods, I think you really should look at this.
If you have an exterior water line break...
You're responsible...
You're responsible from the, you're responsible from the meter to the house.
From leader to your house.
To the meter. To the meter. We don't have to go out in the street with the water line.
They grew with sewer.
Water's different, but sewer does.
Sewer is different, water is just to the meter.
That's right, that's right.
Sewer's to the tap.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And a lot of, we, listen, we talked about this for a long time, Janice, this before we...
Well...
I mean, I wasn't on board, and the more we looked into it, it was a plus, and I wish I'd have had it when my sewer line went.
And that's the reason.
It's a good thing that we don't have to do anything.
Because I wasn't on the council back then, so.
Yeah, we, we discussed and put it off a couple different times.
Yeah, I think we discussed it for two or three meetings.
We did.
And because we had to get back in touch with the company.
That's right, that's right.
And...
If you look on page 15 of your iPads as well, it lists 23 cities in North Carolina.
Yeah, and we actually...
Shelby did one of them. Shelby Assistant City Manager at the time.
Now Shelby didn't get the deal we got.
No, they did not get as good a deal.
We got a better deal than Shelby.
Yeah, I saw that on my iPad the other night, yeah. Well, from all I have read about it here, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, because it's strictly voluntary.
They can do as they wish.
They can do as they wish.
Okay, and that, that was for discussion only?
That was discussion only.
Okay, we'll move to item seven, is other business. Do I have any other business to come before council, from council, at this time?
I maybe do on one thing, and it's about the lists. I've got people asking, where am I on the list for getting these potholes fixed? I don't know how our list looks. I know Chris and I have talked about the ones, because when I rode through Dewey Bay Estates, and you see where the water's standing on the yard, we could see, even myself, with Ronnie and I riding through it, water stands on it because the sides of the road have grown up so, and the water can't get, can't escape.
Is that at the curb as you're going in? Is that what I'm thinking?
Well, it's on, it's on settlers, and it's right there where it goes down into that curb. They just patched it, and it's all out again, because I rode through it real slow, and it was standing with water, it was after that last storm, and my car went, whoa, you know, and I was driving slow, so I can imagine people hitting it.
Is this right when you pass like...
Right there about Steve, Steve Jones.
Okay, you're on up, then. I was thinking on back the other way.
There is, yeah, those are ways, I think, and they're coming in the other way, because yeah, I took quite a beating on that one night, on some of them, and I said, well, we're trying to get a list, I said, they're all over town, and...
Yeah, those, those roads have been patched members' times, but that's probably somewhere in the...
The water just stands on it, washes that patchet right back out.
Well, that's probably cold patch out there.
Yeah, that's a cold patch.
We probably need to get Chad out there and look at, probably doing it.
They're gonna have to cut the shoulders down.
Yeah, that's what he suggested. He said, I know they're not going to like it, but I mean, what else can you do? You've gotta get the water off the road.
And really, would you say that's comparable to what DOT was doing on 150?
We don't know twice.
We won't go that way, not that extreme, but you know, they get the same thing, they cut the shoulders.
You're gonna have, gonna have to, so.
It's similar process.
Right. So I just wanna be able to tell them that we're looking, and you're on the list.
There's a lot of, it's everywhere, and you know, from MPO, they were talking about, it's, it's not just for one city or municipality, it's, it's everywhere.
I just come from Gastonia, and I hit quite a few coming up through there, Kings Mountain the same way, Lingerton, they're all over the place.
You know what I start telling people? Those shovel-ready jobs wanna shovel ready as they thought.
I noticed one, when you come off Stars, and you're turning onto Academy there, it used to be Pinnacle.
Yeah.
There's a big hole there that, that... There's a big hole there that, that, uh, your tire goes down in, right there, is that Cherryville Warehouse?
Yes.
Yeah. Right off of Stars when you turn right.
Turn right, okay, I got you.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, but you've got a list, Chris? And, uh, are we gonna get the same crew out of Bessemer City to do a bunch again, or?
Yes, and we've got them right now, we've got an emergency PO form, just in case we get something on one fifty or two seventy-four that we have to cut up.
Uh huh.
Cause that's got to be fixed in twenty-four hours, uh, before the DDP.
Okay. Okay, uh, any, any other business from council? Any, uh, business from staff?
I'll give you an update, we did go out today, uh, the issue that you are aware of at the gym, you know, they had some, some dirt that, that is not the best in the world. Uh, so we met with the, uh, Chris came and we met with the, the guy that was doing the soil sample. So they think they have a plan in place and they're gonna put, uh, they're basically gonna dig a hole tonight to make sure it's not groundwater coming up. If it's not groundwater coming up, that's a real good thing. Uh, and tomorrow they can fill that in and they've got a geo grid that they'll put down on the ground, and then they bring good dirt and put over top of that, and then we should be good to go. So as long as everything works out tonight and it's not groundwater, we should be making progress tomorrow.
Okay.
So all that dirt is spouted now, is it, does that come from the site?
Most of that is the bad dirt.
So they haven't started bringing in new dirt yet?
No, no, well, they brought a small sample load in for the soil engineer to get, to take back and test it to confirm that it is good dirt. But that's it for now. They'll bring that in after he finishes his test.
And don't forget Friday, um, Yancy, you too, if you can come to the American Legion.
Hot dogs.
For, uh, hot dog lunching with all the trimmings and desserts and everything, it's just an appreciation of our city employees and all that they do for our town.
Thank you.
Are we keeping that building out there? The building, we're just gonna use it for storage or something?
I figure we'll do something with it eventually, yeah.
Is it full of stuff?
Yeah.
They have a lot of stuff, the, the Summer family has a lot of stuff they have to get out there, and I told them, there's no rush, just take your time.
Cause it's a good building, right? I'm sure we got some stuff we can put in there.
Yeah, you know, it must be in pretty good shape if they're storing their Christmas decorations and, uh, different things out there so it's not leaking, as far as we know, so.
I've got one thing, uh, you know, some of the Presbyterian members are wanting that, those trees taken out, in, into the old EMS building? Has that cleared out? Any way we can do that project?
I don't know. I don't know. Uh, to be honest with you, I feel like there's other places that we probably need to take trees out first. Uh, one being down at, say, Dixie U Soft Pop. You take those trees that are in there. Those trees are, are overgrown, I would probably say they're dead, they, you know, the roots have busted up the brick that are, that are around the trees.
Oh yeah, those big oats.
I think those need to come out probably before the ones at the, uh, ambulance bay, in my opinion.
They're so big, I guess they're afraid of what they're, if they come that way.
What of her, is this, uh, so they want to put some landscaping over there, they volunteered to do it if we'll, move, clear all that stuff out?
And, you know, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the concept, yeah, it'd be good to get them gone, but I just don't know if it
The priority level.
Locations, and that's just my opinion.
Before I guess I'm gonna spring it up.
The EMS building?
We do, we get out.
Anything from staff?
Nothing further.
Okay, if not, uh, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second for adjournment, all in favor say aye. All opposed, the same, we are adjourned.
I know we're adjourned, but I got one more thing. Come back in. Uh, try to remember, uh, I know, at, uh, June's meeting, you know, we'll obviously have the budget, but the, the new fees that we gave to you maybe two months ago, to remember that, we'll need to make a decision on that as well.
Okay. And, uh, we'll need to call, uh.
That's just recording fees.
We either need our city clerk or city manager to let, uh, ABC know.
I'll call them, I'll take care of that, just say, hey, we're gonna vote on that at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you, John.
Then we'll have to vote on it.
I don't.